For Tuesday, November the 12th, 2019. Thank you. Jay Farrell, would you leave?
With the wishes to the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, which stands one nation under God and indivisible with every being of us.
Thank you. I need two motions, one regarding the overall agenda and one regarding consent agenda. Are there motions to be made on that account?
Motion to accept the agenda. Has presented to make a motion to include consent agenda with the corrections to October 20th, 2019 minutes that we have around. Yes, these are very long headaches.
May I ask, if there was an interest in having a closed session, consult with our attorney at the end of the meeting, would you manage your motion to?
And the agenda to include a closed session at the end.
You've heard Michael Fiocco's motion. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carried. Let it be noted that Mayor for Tim Pamela Baldwin is not present tonight and has had a family emergency. We hope that things go well for them. The motion also contains the consent agenda, so we'll now go into evidentiary hearing as a motion to go into our evidentiary hearing that was left open from last meeting. Moved by Michael Fiocco.
Second.
Seconded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carried. Victoria Bayless will lead us in further discussion of the Tillman Communication Tower.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Brian is trying to get the clicker, but I can go ahead and start. So, special use permit 2019-001. Tillman Infrastructures is proposing a deconstruction of a communication tower at the intersection of Mitchell's Chapel Road and also important Service Road on Parcel 68162. The site is zoned for a two residential agriculture, two acres minimum, where communication towers over 50 feet in height are required to obtain a special use permit. The proposed tower is to be 300 feet in height and located close to the center of the 23 acre parcel. The tower is located at least 100 feet from any residence and new vegetation will be planted to meet the screen of the ordinance. My recommendation is to continue the evidentiary hearing.
The matter was left open at the last meeting for amendments to the material that accompanies the request. If there are anyone who wishes to speak at the evidentiary hearing, have it continued from the last meeting. Paul Mason, do I need to re-swear the witness?
Uh-uh, ma'am. I think he was sworn previously.
Good evening again. Karen Kimarite with a law firm of Fox Rothschild in Raleigh. Here on behalf of the applicant, Tillman, and have several representatives with me as well this evening. We have corrected the application and the statement of compliance, and I have pre-credit several times, so it should be, there should be no mistakes or errors in the application and the statement of compliance, and I'd ask that it be admitted into the record.
Yes, it will be admitted in the evidence.
And we are available to answer any questions with the board.
Questions by the board. If the corrections haven't been made, is there anything further that you would like to state for the record?
Nothing further from that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to go out of the public, the evidentiary hearing then?
So moved.
Moved by Jay Farrell, seconded by Michael Fiocco. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are then at the next agenda item, which is public expression speakers. My understanding is that the matter then with the evidentiary hearing will be going to the planning board in December, is that correct, and then back to us at the closing on December? Public expression speakers, four people have signed up, and this, of course, is the time for us to hear from people concerning matters for the town. Patty Duke, if you'll come to the, to the pro-uments and we have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I'm Patty Duke, and I'm a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I wanted to thank y'all, the outgoing commissioners for and mayor, for your wonderful service to Pittsburgh, to the parks, and to the extraterrestrial jurisdictions that Moncrief's part. So, thank you again.
Thank you very much. Pam Cash Roper is our next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the board. I'm Pam Cash Roper, and I live at 167 Winston Way, Apartment 108. You may be surprised to see me because I didn't win last Tuesday. In fact, I finished last. But I feel great because the real winner last week was the town of Pittsburgh. We had over 1,000 citizens vote, which is a record. The municipal turnout was 32 percent, which was much higher than Wake County and higher than Silver City. Now, I wish more people would vote, but at least we all campaigned on strong issues and informed the people of Pittsburgh. On that point, I am still the only candidate who resides in affordable housing, and I will continue to advocate for affordable housing in Pittsburgh. I'm not going away. On that point, and as we all know, affordable housing is an issue in 2015, 2017, 2019, and will likely be an issue in 2021. Let's work together on this important issue. For that reason, I want to offer my services to the town on an advisory board. If one that deals with planning, affordable housing, water, et cetera is not available, I would gladly serve on the ABC board in the spot that was opened by the departure of our incoming mayor, Jim Nass. For the record, I'm a retired nurse, which I think would be of interest to that board, but my family has also owned restaurants, bars, including what is now Verly's and a sports bar on West Franklin Street, which is also a good background for services that the ABC board provides the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Third speaker is Randy Dolan.
Mayor, board, I just want to reflect what Patty Duke said. Quick thank you. There's a handout from Senator Valerie Fuchet. She responded to the resolution that the board passed in favor of the Welcome Center, and on behalf of Main Street Pittsburgh, of which Commissioner Fiocco is a member, our new incoming mayor, Jim Nass is a member, and others, we'd like to thank you for your support, and we were very happy to get support from Senator Fuchet and many other organizations, so thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Candice Sun.
She decided to go home a little while, and she asked me to bring that up during the commissioners' session.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. This matter on the Agenda Amendment, Commissioner Manager update, I do not have an update to offer tonight. I just would like to say that, that the trip that I took has given me a perspective which I would like to just pass on as I get ready to pass the gavel a month from today or so, and that is that the people of Nepal, which is where I went, are, they, it's a very poor country in many respects. They don't have anywhere near the infrastructure, the clean water, the issues that, that make life happy, and yet they are some of the happiest people in the world. I know that Bhutan actually did a survey and beat them out by being considered the happiest country in the, in the world, but the people of Nepal, I always felt safe being there. I felt a real joy that they are a very happy people, and if one can be so happy with so little, I think it serves as a great reflection for us to think about how privileged we are and how, and how we really need to remind ourselves daily that we have so many special things to be thankful for, and I certainly have been thankful for the process that has brought me here and, and the last four years of being your mayor. So, I just almost leave you, but with that thought for, for today. Are there any commissioner updates with respect to organizations that we have in the community? I think Michael Fiocco had his red pen.
I have some notes.
Yes.
Now, I can say that we attended the EDC meeting this morning, and they're in the middle of their strategic plan, which will be their master plan, if you will, for the next three years, and it was a very engaged meeting, and so I think they're making great progress. Talking about Main Street, Randy just mentioned the Welcome Center, and we are working feverishly on that and have a deadline to submit documents to the Chatham Chamber of Commerce tomorrow to answer some of the questions they had about possibly co-locating with Main Street in the building, and we have submitted a request to the county for help with some funding. They periodically mentioned that they were interested in helping Main Street but needed something specific to do so, so we have this specific project, so they will hear our request next Monday night at their board meeting, and so hopefully we'll, we'll have success. Couple of facades are underway. Pam and Snuffy are very close to being done with their design, and we will hear their application on the 20th, and then Cindy and Tommy were in the middle of review of their design ideas and getting close to that as well. So, that will be two major corners of Bull Brother Street that hopefully will make improvements to.
Thank you. Chatham Arts Council or Human Relations Committee, anybody?
Arts Guild Committee happening right now.
Is there? Climate change? All right. And update from, from Brian Ruth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. Somebody may have heard Paul Ward, who's held the position of Parks Planner for the last few years. I believe he's been here for about 11 years, is leaving us, taking a job in Washington State. His last day with the town, I believe, will be on November 28th. I'm sorry. Duties will be split. Once he does leave, we'll, we're evaluating, but at this point duties will be mainly split between streets and utilities and planning and community development for now. We're going to be evaluating the position as it's probably situated with Paul, with Mr. Jones, and with Mr. Potte. I think, I think we can all agree, Paul did a great job at developing some parks that we all enjoyed over the last few years, and I'm sure he'll be, I'm sure wherever he's going in Washington, he'll benefit from that talent as well. So, appreciate his work on that. New planner position. We've interviewed three candidates, I believe, all of last week. Those, those candidates will be evaluated this week, and we'll determine if we can make an offer to one of them. I think we've got, got some, some good stuff to work with there. The engineering position is, we received a few resumes, couple resumes for that. We'll evaluate whether we want to move forward with that, with that solicitation. And then finally, the position of customer service rep over at the Chatham Mills office will be posted this week with the updated salary line, and I believe the responsibilities are merely to be kept the same. That position will be out. We'll look forward to filling that as soon as we can as well. And then the other thing I would mention with regard to Powell Place and the new construction in particular in Powell Place, we received, this one complaint I'm aware of about construction occurring in the early morning hours at the site where the new apartments are being built. Town did not give permission for those early hours. We received a formal request today to allow contractors to do that work. I have, I'll be circling back with, with Mr. Potte, Mr. Jones, before giving my final answer, but it would be my intention that, that anything that happens, they would not interrupt or interfere with, with normal day-to-day life in that neighborhood, so my inclination at this point is not allow early construction on that site. We'll, we'll enforce the matter as necessary within court. With that, I'll tap out. If you have any questions or concerns, I'd be very happy to try to answer.
Any questions for the manager?
Oh, one other, I'm sorry, there are, one other note that I have there is with regards to streetlights in Powell Place, we had received, we've received a request over the years for Powell Place to essentially cede control of the streetlights in the neighborhood. I've had conversations with previous, the previous developer over the years on it. It's understanding that many of those streetlights are outside of the right, the right of way, so there's going to be kind of a challenge to determine how the town can even take the streetlights in that, in that situation, so we will have a formal response to Powell Place, at least for your information. That's where, that's where the situation stands as of now. With that, I'll finally tap out. Thank you.
Questions? Anything for Mr. Chris Pitt. And slung into new business, there's the request for the Pittsburgh ABC Board to obtain working capital. It is a matter we'll be hearing through the hearing tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here's the mayor. This is a little bit of an odd request, but I hope you'll see it as kind of a straightforward administrative request. So, what we're asking is that you all reconsider your motion from last week, last meeting, and agree to a 60-40 split of excess working capital for fiscal year 1819, that would be likely that in previous years, and then simply directly request a supplemental distribution of the $10,000 for whatever purpose you want, of course, but that's up to you, but as you said, from this or soon. And the reason we're asking that is it's much simpler administratively and it's less costly for the ABC board. And this is, here's, here's what goes on. So, what we do, and what we've done for the past few years, is we ask for this split approval, and it's an agreement about the excess working capital distribution from the previous fiscal year. So, that agreement applied to fiscal year 1819, past tense. Okay. And what's always happened is the approvals are given, kept with the financial records, and they become finance, and part of the financial records, and they would show that previous year, in this case fiscal year 1819, fiscal year 1819, were distributed as you approved. Right now, we're currently in a state where technically it says, well, we didn't distribute it as you approved. We distributed it 60-40. So, so, so what would happen in that case is, if you don't revise it, we would have to revise the fiscal year, last year fiscal year's reports. We'd have to resubmit those to the state and explain why, and we'd have to pay an audit firm to make those revisions. So, however, if you simply just agree to the 60-40 split and then make it just a direct request for an additional distribution, we could just simply take that out of current year's funds, and all that extra stuff goes away, and it's a, it's a simpler and less expensive path to the same point, really, and, but it makes, it makes a big difference. I mean, it kind of seems odd. It's going to be the same check, same count, same check number, but it's very different in the way which fiscal year it gets counted towards. So, we would ask you all to consider that. Like I said, it would get you all to the same point and would be easier for us and less costly.
Thank you for that explanation. Are there questions from Mr. Carrington, or is there a motion?
Make a motion that we adjust our split agreement to the 60-40 and request an additional remuneration, if you will, of $10,000.
Second. Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Or just a big up to us.
You all, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Well, we're all learning, and like we, we had talked about this and what we should do this year. I know in the past, we've done this kind of retrospectively. I think early on, there was even a question if there'd be any capital distributed, much less any excess, so I think this year, what we should do is, I mean, there's advantage to doing that for the fact. You know the exact numbers you're agreeing to, but I think probably it's a good idea, maybe six months from now, whatever, say, look at prospectively, what split will you all agree to, and then it will not be, you know, it'll be done. We can get to the order ahead of time, and you know, whatever you do is exactly as you already approved, rather than counting on what you will approve later, so it's something I'll probably read out in a few months or something. Thank you all again.
Thank you, sir. Next item on new business.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, on the other side of the memo, there was an ordinance, a budget ordinance, if you could maybe say something about that. I'll make a motion to approve that budget ordinance, so bill basically what we're distributing.
Moved by Michael Fiocco. Seconded by Beth. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Bayless will lead us in the discussion of the, help me understand how to conduct this, Victoria.
Automatics.
Automatics. Assembly facility, thank you.
Thank you. This is the Plan 2019-06. Chris Wiesek has submitted plans for review. The site is located on Parcel 62851 along Moncrief Pittsburgh Road, and is zoned into heavy industrial. The proposal is to construct a 19,824 square foot facility for the assembly of electric and electronic machinery and equipment. This use requires 10 parking spaces. The applicant will be providing 19 paved spaces. This structure will be using well and septic since town utilities are not within the immediate vicinity. The planning board reviewed the site plan at their meeting on November 4th, 2019, and recommended approval and a vote of four to zero. The plans for the site have been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicant development or to study appropriate department and to add to our community approval of the response.
Yeah, applicant. Questions for Victoria or Chris Wiesek?
This is a question that's not really for the applicant, but it's just something that came to my mind. I understand that the water and sewer are not within the immediate vicinity, and I wonder if we might consider doing sort of analysis to see if it would be worthwhile to bring water from out there to the shore.
Is that a question for me?
Not really a question as much as it is. I would be interested to know if, if revenue from water and sewer would make it worthwhile to the water line, but I have no idea what would be worthwhile.
This is on the far side of the former concrete plant, which had a waterline extension that went down to Culver, and it was pretty expensive.
I'm just wondering if that would be worthwhile, like it would not.
Has the fire marshal done away with it and approved the site plan?
He's seeing the site plan.
Sign off on it. He's good?
It has damp on it.
Any further questions for Victoria, or is there a motion?
I have, I have a couple left, at least. The driveway going in there, is that private? I believe it used to be called Alma Children Drive. It's been changed to Calway.
Yeah.
Is it private?
It's an easement. It's not a public right of way.
Okay, is the, the automatics talking to Mr. Robertson regarding keeping up this road?
I'm assuming so. I'm going to let them speak to that.
I was Chris Wiesek for the land planners with, for Chris Wiesek, I know he has spoken with the landowners that live on the end of that, and he understands that he will help them maintain that street. The idea for this kind of location, this facility, is that he's trying to move his business from Cary out here into Pittsburgh, where he lives, and he would love to have public, public utilities, but they're not available right now. So, in the future, the, the idea for the site is to actually have public utilities, public water, and sewer services, as well as public street through the site to serve the site. I'm not supposed to, not easement like it is right now, but, so that'll be temporary.
One other question on the front. If we could go back to the picture, it's in page L2. It shows a lawn, so I assume you're going, all the trees in front of that property will be removed, all the vegetation. Reason I know, I wrote out there this afternoon, and it is quite, quite a nice amount of trees and vegetation out there, plus Robertson's coming in and out of there. Some type of buffer was left, other than just pretty green grass.
So, there will be buffers on both sides of the property?
Right.
As well as, you can see the line is labeled LOD on there. That's actually the limits of grading. Nothing will be disturbed beyond that line. So, it looks like there's probably the east side of the property is probably about 50 or 60 feet that will be left untouched. We're going to try to disturb it.
Only on toward the Robertson's property?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to try to leave as much as we can, just whatever we can do, we will.
So, from, from that road going in to the front of the building, that would be more or less just, all just flat and grass, just, all of it, everything would be moved up from like it's cut down.
What if I come up there, so you can show me exactly what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's on L2, on this lawn.
Right, you're correct.
Yeah, right here. When you come out this curve, right here, all this area here, it's got lawn right out through here, too, so all of this, I assume, would be.
Yes, sir, sir.
Clear cut.
This line right here is what would be clear cut.
Okay.
To that line right here.
Right here.
Yes, sir. That would be left on this side.
Yeah, okay.
That's a question.
That power line goes back through to the back, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, that's pretty much all I had. I actually talked to Mr. Robertson's son this afternoon, and they're real pleased with you guys.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Moved by Michael Fiocco.
Second.
Seconded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carried. Next under whole business, we have a subdivision flat review on Thompson Street subdivision. Victoria Bayless will lead us in the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. This is subdivision 2016-02. Chatham Park Investors, Illinois.
Town Park Investors, L P, has submitted for approval of the final flat of the Thompson Street subdivision. The preliminary flat for this subdivision was approved by the Board of Commissioners on September eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. The subdivision creates twenty-nine residential lots, six additional tracts, and the public right of ways for Vine Parkway, Cottage Way, and Edgefield Street. This final flat will provide six point five three seven acres of open space and three point two two four acres of precovered area. The planning board reviewed this flat at their meeting on November fourth, two thousand and nineteen, and recommended approval and a vote of four to zero. The applicant has requested the Board of Commissioners approve the final flat with a completion bond for the remaining infrastructure not yet completed at this time. This is in accordance with the subdivision ordinance requirement for final flats. System development fees will be required for this project prior to the reportation of a flat. They've been calculated based on meter size and members in accordance with the approved twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget. Additional information has been provided in your packet about our request from the applicant for the town to reevaluate the fee calculation for these fees with the approval for a reduction in flow that has been granted by the state to Channel Park. Staff is recommending approval of the final flat subject to issuance of any additional local industry permit.
Questions for Victoria or the developer?
On the parkland, and there is the suggestion or request that a ten acre, ten acre parcel, which is being developed by Town Park as parkland, be incorporated into this flat, therefore making recreation requirements adequate for the flat. That correct?
At a later time, they will come back and indeed, or dedicate that ten acre park. There's a, I think we thought of the, but I think what they're saying, we all know that we're building this ten acre park is under review. That's one more than satisfied, these twenty-nine lots, and then the remaining, then the other thirty-four are the cottages. They're just trying to remind you that's what they're trying to do, and the remaining balance of what they would need for this area, they're saying to the board, consider the ten acres as, as part of that, uh, parkland dedication that we're working on.
And this is not only the parkland dedication, this is construction of improvements?
Well, through the park, the vendor park site plan approval process, that will need to be brought up as to what is actually going to be built by the developer, and then approval of the park itself by the town, and then what we will be built, be asked of, uh, what money is worth to make that part a natural of the, of the town.
Okay. Was my understanding that they were planning to build that park?
I think there is some discussion that you can have to have got a park on that and how the public facilities element was ultimately worked.
See, see if, if nodding heads, would anyone like to go to podium and tell them that?
And you may not have heard, but Jeff Jones was simply saying that the ten acre parcel will be reviewed at a future time and a decision made between the developer and the town as to what will be supplied by the town and what will be supplied by the developer.
That's my. Yeah.
Right.
Robbie Wood is right there, who may have Channel Park Investors. So, that is correct. So, what we're looking at, working with staff, we've been working with staff on this for a while, is do we go and dedicate the ten acre area, ten acres now on this? So, one of the, um, the thoughts on this is we dedicate it, and then we say, say we dedicate the ten acres to the town, then we're going to come back and make improvements. And Channel Park has committed, we are building the park and making improvements. So, then we're trying to make improvements on town, on property, and you run into liability issues, and it gets complicated legally, so. So, the thought was, working with Jeff on this, saying, look, we will defer this, we know we're moving forward with this. If you recall, we approved, you approved the location of that Channel Park on January fourteenth of this year. Since then, we've had a pre-seminar meeting with the town staff, we've submitted a full site plan CDs to the town in September of this year. Town staff is reviewing that plan now, and it is the same plan that you, you saw the conceptual plan, we are prepared, prepared full site plan and then construction plans for that part. So, we're trying to get it approved and under construction as, as soon as possible.
Do we need some sort of memorandum of understanding with respect to that, or is the site plan sufficient to be?
Well, I think, I think you all agreeing to defer that remaining balance of just outside the, etc., that's the action that you have to take, you improve it. There's more parkland.
Yes. Yeah. Um, still on the topic of parkland, when we're doing the calculations as to how much is required for a block, are we following the one twenty-fifth per acre at accelerated rate?
Yes.
Okay, great. And one other thing, there was a memorandum in here that they mentioned of the multi-use path easement, but that multi-use path is also being constructed as part of this flat, just as sidewalks and the streets and that kind of thing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there further questions for Victoria or the developer? Is there a motion?
Question to approve the final flat. With the allowance that the ten acre park, um, to be constructed later and dedicated later, satisfy the parkland requirements for this flat?
Is it necessary to talk about the, um, the water rebate at this time?
I think we require more information to be able to make a decision on that. We need even more information.
All right. You've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Special use permit for music studio Victoria Vailis, which states that for this particular gen.
This is a special use permit two zero one nine dash zero three. Luke McMahon is requesting a special use permit to operate music studio along U S Highway sixty-four, Business West, on parcel one zero zero six two. The site is zoned RA two, residential agriculture to a minimum, where music studios are required to obtain a special use permit. The applicant is proposing to use existing structure on the property for the studio. A public hearing was held on October twenty eighth. The applicant was the only speaker to participate in this hearing. The planning board considered the proposed plans at their meeting on November fourth, and the board found the plans to be satisfactory and recommended approval on a vote of four to zero.
Questions for Victoria or Luke McMahon? Make a motion to approve. Moved by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by John Vonitz. Those in favor, or certain?
Victoria, given this outside the corporate blocks, then the ETJ, I think that would place it subject to accounting noise ordinance as opposed to the town.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further questions? Motion by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by John Vonitz. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The next matter is new town hall design utility discussion, we'll be hearing from the House Architect.
Thank you for allowing us the time to come before you this evening. We have a twofold mission tonight with you. One is to give you an update on some of those outstanding site utility improvement issues that we've been discussing with you for a number of months. We have some, some news for that. And then also to get some guidance, some direction from you on a number of those items that we feel we've, we've gotten a good handle on. So, here we go. These are the items that we're going to be seeking direction on this evening, but before we dive into those, I'll give you a quick update on what is, what the other utilities, the status and the other utilities are. So, you may remember that we had a number of outstanding questions about what was going on below grade in front of the, the project site. Up here on the screen, you'll see the, the project site plan. We know that there's a duct bank for Century Link running down the center, or along the edge of Salisbury Street in front of the project site. We still do not have that information related to, we have some, some, whatever we can gain about the, um, the location of that from above ground, but we do not have below ground information, we do not have those heights, the vertical heights of where the duct bank falls. So, that's still outstanding. But what we have managed to do is meet with Century Link and Duke on site to discuss what is running over head. So, right in kind of the middle of the front of our site, there's a, an existing pole that has a number of Century Link cables running to it, and so we discussed with Century Link and Duke a number of options for relocating that, and there were about three options presented to them, they took a look at that, said we really only support one of those options, or are interested in doing one of those options. So, what we have found is that really the only option for relocating those above ground cables is to run it to the other side of the street. So, um, so we have gotten some costs, um, information about that option, and we're going to delineate that in the upcoming, um, design development set that we're going to be giving to you all next week. And we'll have those costs delineated as well. So, that's one item that we have an update on. And then the other is that we were continuing to gather information about the stormwater system along Salisbury Street. And what we've found is that Hydro Structures had done some, um, some videotaping of the existing stormwater amenities and utilities along Salisbury Street. You may remember that in the block in front of our project, there is no stormwater system, no existing stormwater system. We talked about how all the water that's on site that, that falls during a rainstorm just surface drains out into the street. It goes down Salisbury Street and down that grade, and then is collected somewhat successfully down the road, kind of in front of where House Architect's office is. And so, we've found that there's a number of deficiencies in those existing stormwater lines. There's actually some utilities that are bored straight through some of those, those stormwater lines. So, what we are doing as part of our design development set is that we're going to evaluate what we know and provide to you as part of that design development set a recommendation for how we might tie in building into the stormwater system. It will require improvements along Salisbury Street. One of the, the things that is included in our project design is treatment of the stormwater on site. And when it's treated on site, we have to find a way to actually release that water after it's treated. So, given that there's no stormwater utilities on Salisbury Street in front of the project, we have to tie in where we can down the street. So, the costs associated with that, we are currently estimating that, that's all going to be included in our DD set. So, I think at that point, you'll have more information that you can use to evaluate that. But if we go back to what we do know right now, we have had a number of meetings and discussions over the last several months with town staff and with various utility companies, and we have some recommendations this evening to discuss with you about the various utilities for the project. The only one of these things that is on site is the actual stormwater management and filtration system. This system, whichever type we choose, is going to be located under the entry drive slash plaza, entry plaza, that's along Salisbury Street. We're still in the process of determining exactly the best location for that, but there are really two options. So, when we had discussed those two options with the town a few months ago, what we currently have in the project budget is the storm filter system. That's a relatively new, um, system. It is state-approved. It does have a higher cost upfront. It's about twice the material cost as the sand filter system, but as I said, it is currently in our budget. We have, that is what we would recommend proceeding with from, if the budget can support it, that it is the least maintenance-intensive as you move forward for the years ahead. The other option is the sand filter system that has been used for quite some time. It's a known system, but it does require some pretty maintenance-heavy and regular attention being given to it. It requires actually physically shoveling out all the sand within the system and removing that. How frequently? About every three years for the three years?
Max.
Three years max, so.
Most likely.
Yeah, and, and it does involve a lot of manholes. There's, there's pros and cons to both of these options, and we would recommend proceeding though with the storm filter system. We think that it's a much, much easier system to maintain, that despite the upfront costs, that it will save you long-term. And it's just a, it's just a cleaner system overall. We also have gotten some information related to the water main improvements. You might remember the last time we met, we hadn't yet gotten some feedback from Hydro Structures as to what they would recommend for the water main extension, either in front, just for the one block in front of the project, either that or looping the entire block to tie in a new eight-inch water main around the entire block, or a third option that they looked at was going two blocks. So, from Hillsborough Street all the way down to Rectory Street. And what they've found was that option number three, if funds are available for it, option number three will more comprehensively, um, more comprehensively help the town in its long-term water needs, and, and they've provided that, that report for review. We agree with their assessment, but what we've found in our preliminary review of their report is that all three options appear to allow us to remove the fire tank from our project scope. And that will be a good chunk of money that if we can confirm that in this design phase, then, then that would be a good savings for the project. So, from the project standpoint, any of the three options is, is good for the project. But as with the stormwater filtration system, we need to know which option we're proceeding with so that we can move forward with design. The design of both of those are right now slated to be in our scope. And then the third item we'd like your, your input on this evening is whether or not we should design any off-site sewer improvements. design any off-site sewer improvements. So the current plan is just to tie the building into the existing sewer line. It is a terracotta line that's in good shape, but it is terracotta. So we do know that in the process of this project, we're going to end up, this is a sketch that Luton had done of all the site utilities running in front of the project site, but we're going to be tearing up a significant portion, if not the entirety of Hills, or Salisbury Street for the block in front of the project. While that's open, it may be beneficial to the town to make any repairs to the sewer line, the existing sewer line. And that would be what we would recommend, again, if we found that the project budget could support it. We do not currently have a cost associated with that. We would, however, design that improvement and provide cost information to you if that's something the town would like us to do. And then lastly, we are, we have put together a proposal for some additional, what's called a subsurface utility engineering, which involves potholing, for lack of a better term, just doing some vertical investigations below ground to try to identify exactly where that CenturyLink duct bank is. And that will be critical as we design the stormwater treatment system because we know we're going to need to cross it. And if it's too high, we need to go lower. If it's too low than we, or lower than we know we can go over it. We suspect we're going to have to go under it. But knowing exactly where we're going to need to cross it will impact the design, it'll impact the project budget. So we have a proposal that we have given to Mr. Grusbeck for those services, and we're looking for review and approval of that tonight. I'm happy to answer any of your questions. I'm joined tonight by Lester Love with Luton Companies here. If there's anything that he can weigh in on. Questions on these four matters?
On the options one, two, and three.
For the water main?
Yeah, those are all eight-inch, new eight-inch ducts.
Yes.
You'll see.
I'm sorry.
Option three on the outside.
I think, I think it was still in the...
Time to retain the two.
They do have.
We consider another option.
Okay. I do think for the purposes of this, there was, you are correct, that there was another, I think, additional little extension that they looked at to connecting to an existing ten-inch. Yeah.
So all those scenarios eliminate the tank, but the pump remains?
We...
In all scenarios?
And that's what our preliminary calculations have shown us.
Okay.
We're going to be able to confirm that soon, for sure. We do feel strongly that the pump has to remain. The static pressure did not improve with increasing the pipe size, but the flow did. So looking at those numbers that we have from Hydrostructures, the fire pump remaining in the project, given the height of the building, is something that we need.
And there was an idea that maybe coming off of Hank Street that's 20 feet or 15 feet higher than Salisbury, coming into the building there, reduces it to a three-story building as opposed to a four-story building. Does that help at all?
It does help a little bit, but you have to consider we also have the tower. A three-story building is right at that cusp of whether you need the fire pump or not. And we have a portion that does go to four stories above Hank Street. Even if we didn't have that, we still would recommend having the fire pump. And the riser room is on the ground floor.
Yeah, you could change the construction and bring it into the second floor.
I think it would be difficult to get in at that level, just, we don't have grade per se at that level. We have it, I guess it comes...
Yeah, I just, I just, you know, thinking about elevations. If we're looking at an elevation issue and pressure, then that's one way to do it, but if it's not producing the result, and it's got all these other considerations that aren't ideal, then it makes sense to come off Salisbury. I think so from a stormwater perspective, you know, either get rid of all of it and just let it run off the way it does today, I think we'd be very good stewards, or a good example, have a good example for anyone else, but it's an option. I don't think it's an attractive option. I'm getting a hairy eyeball all over here.
I'm just not sure of seriousness.
When, you know, we're talking options.
We are talking options.
Yeah. I mean, I don't support that option, but I wanted to identify it as well.
There is no actual requirement that we treat the water, but it is certainly something that we recommend if we can.
I mean, it's a very minimum, we shouldn't make it worse. So as long as this project doesn't make it worse, then that's kind of where I'm sitting. My impression, we wanted to try to kill two birds with one stone as much as humanly possible.
No, I'm not recommending at all. I'm just, I'm just, because I'm always conscious of the fact that that is an option, but I don't think anyone supports it. But it is an option.
I have a question regarding the water main.
Yes.
The one block, is that just considered from Hillsborough Street down Hanks to the end of the street, stopping and tying into the old line?
It is from Hillsborough Street, but on Salisbury Street, down one block to Fayetteville. And actually, I didn't note this earlier, we have discussed that with you all prior. We have, we have estimated the cost of that. And that was included in our schematic design report and something that we reviewed and have since said, yes, we want to do that, or the town has said they want to do that. So we have a number in the project budget currently for one block of eight-inch water main replacement. That number is not what you currently, what you would see in Hydrostructures' report. They did theirs separately and independently from our estimate. We would potentially, we would need to evaluate that and see perhaps why there's a differential in that cost as we move forward. If that's the design option that we move forward with, we would do that in the next...
So that line, that new line will be tied into a six-inch line, is that down through there with some? And if we do the loop, it will loop down Salisbury, up by Fiddle, and back to Hanks onto Hillsborough, correct?
I know, I can't speak for Hydrostructures' report and exactly what their recommendations are and why. I know that from our review of it, it appeared that the option number three got more, it actually helped, helped improve. Yeah. Yeah, and beyond just our project site.
That would go all the way down to...
Rectory Street, yeah.
And come back up Salisbury.
But looping on...
The two blocks.
It would just go from Hillsborough to Rectory, the two blocks, it would not...
No loop, okay.
Looping onto Hanks does not improve the town's system?
Not to me, no. It's very isolated when you do the two blocks, you provide a much broader, that once either trying to add two larger lines in a grid to provide that pressure along.
Is the Chief Chilera involved in any of this? Are they, anything to tie into there?
They're not a part of the planning process right now. It would be something we would have to talk to them about if they were still just...
They would be a beneficiary of it, but when we're talking system-wide improvements, more bang than not for three.
And will across the city from the official process.
And whichever option the town would choose to go with, we would, we would provide an estimate for that, too. We would probably not have that estimate complete for the DD set next week, that would be in the next iteration. But we have an estimate for one block of improvement, and we have Hydrostructures' estimates for all three options at this time.
Well, how many holes is the SUE proposing to...
I'll let, I'll let Lester.
By now, we're proposing, I think it's 23 holes.
Wow.
And the reason that there's so many is the duct bank itself, you've got the pothole inside, so you can fit that with. So if we were thinking of going to profile the duct bank in four or five places, it'd be double that number. So that's why the number's so high. And yet, the rest of those account for all our quality with our storm, our water and sewer service. And just as Javon mentioned, there's more to that duct bank at Salisbury and Fayetteville intersection. It splits off in five different directions, which we didn't realize that until just recently. So where we continue our storm, if we continue our water, we need to know where they go. Because per the video, some of that duct bank goes right through your storm drains. Some of the storm drains is sitting right on top of your sewer line exposed, so there's a lot of parts in there that are going to need to be sort of accounted for when you move forward.
Well, then that helps we understand the cost.
Yeah.
I thought we were doing eight or nine holes, about 23,000 is a lot, huh?
And what that's based on is an estimate, is not to see, we were doing it per hole.
Yeah.
Because if, we felt that was a better option, because we get out there and we find we don't need 23, if we need less, if we need more, I think I included a couple extra ones. Potholing is not an exact science. I mean, you try to find, if you go down six feet, that's the standard, and the rate for that, I think is the best route to the town. If the duct bank is tighter, and looking in the manholes from the pictures, it just seems to go everywhere. Hopefully, it's just a tight grid and we can get truly on both sides of it, get the top and the bottom. If it's a tight and we can go with one, we may not need that many. But we didn't want to come out there and find out a little bit. So I've given you the worst case of a scenario.
And when you're done, you'll know where the top and the bottom of the system is.
And by looking at the current manhole each end, it gives us no indication because they've got them stacked in there from five feet on that, and it's just, so there's nothing consistent. So that's the more important reason we need to make sure we're truly, if we're going to cross it. And when you mentioned earlier, yeah, option one would be cheap draw off the site, not really...
Don't have to worry about this.
That's what she thought, yeah.
And if it, just a comment, if it helps, the ordinance amending the capital project budget that's proposed for this project in the amount of $23,000 is coming from existing contingency funds, so it's not making an additional draw from fund dollars. We're trying to be transparent with how the money is moving within the project.
And remind us, who is the owner of the duct bank?
That is CenturyLink.
CenturyLink. And CenturyLink has not been, we're coming on a defecation of these details because...
It seems like they've just not had the right people on site when needed to actually get into manholes.
Well, I think another thing is CenturyLink, what we found is they'll come out there bringing their laptops and they'll show us, but they will not provide that information. Why, I don't know. They've been able to tell us what Foxworth stuff is, but they will not give us any information for it. That's the reason why, but we asked and they would not provide that. They've been more happy to talk about it from an engineering perspective, they're getting stuff located, they've been extending each other in the last five minutes. You know, that is their main figure, serves a portion of the town. If there's any, imagine a military or anything in there, that could be the reason that's really... They showed it to us on the screen, it told us we could take a picture on our phone, but we couldn't have the files. One thing I will say about the underground and the overhead, they were very interested in sharing lines with Duke to cross over to the other side of the road. What ultimately drove them to stick with taking the above ground that's in front of the site and going underground was Duke's reluctance to upgrade their pole system to support the additional weight structure from this. And once Duke said no, then CenturyLink had a look at it from their own self-supporting, and it was going to require some additional guy wires that did meet their risk management. So they came back and said the only option is to take it underground in front of our site, which they can do via open cut, which will have the whole area pretty much torn up anyway, or they could bore. But that's just more lines that'll be underground eventually that we need to know now. They can do that anytime, but we would want to get our system properly coordinated with them. And that's essentially just the front of our site. There's a pole on each end right now that they could come and go down, go underground. Probably, I even offered the opportunity for them to add additional, some black conduits so they could have future extensions, you know, if they do it on their dime. I bet it does. Will not be an inexpensive route, if they can do that.
Well, if they open up the road and lay conduit again, let's record that with a survey so we know where it is in the future.
They will actually put that in more modern duct banks and probably work in there. I don't know the exact date, but the underground systems you placed there, they said they expected our early six feet, I don't know if that's true or not, but it's been around a while.
And they won't allow us access or direct observation?
To go in their manholes, they do it themselves. They're very specific. I don't think you want to put, anybody that knows anyone who works in serious stuff in there. The challenge has been to get them to actually go in the manhole and verify the elevations they've made. Part of this SUE, they have our team actually go work with them again to see if we can see anything that's similar equipment. But the main goal is to actually vertically locate by doing a non-inferenceless technology of vacuum extraction and arrows to be down, shoot for slums. And we will invite CenturyLink back, they usually like to run and work around their stuff. However, they did tell us in the field that they don't have to be there for that, which is quite interesting that they worked through, and that they had to be there for everything else.
So again, just to clarify, what we're talking about is a communications utility, a regulated utility, that is reluctant to share location of their lines underground, which results in us contemplating an expense of $23,000.
Well, they will locate it horizontal, but they won't give any clarification of depths. And I think part of it is, if they have a plan, I don't think they're comfortable that that plan was put in that way. And other than the two manholes, we don't know what's between them.
Okay.
Two different engineers has come out. One of them was pretty clear of what it was, the second said, I can guarantee that that's what's where it's supposed to be. And when you look at the horizontal locates, they don't match up at all with their plan, which is the ultimate reason. But they themselves would not do any bird extract unless they were going to repair something in this street. That's what I'm leading into this.
And the reason we're looking at potholing or direct observation through vacuum extraction is because other methods, I don't know, and I don't mean to assume, but I'm wondering about, I've heard about ground penetrating radar, or are there other systems?
Yes, GPR and electromagnetic are two types you can use. But when you've got this duct bank that is on different levels, you may be able to pick up the highest one, but you would never know what's underneath it.
And how deep it goes.
And how deep it is. But real, the question here is for us is not that there's, they told us there's eight duct banks that come out of that first, or six that come out of the first manhole down to Fayetteville. From that one, there's eight. And they go, they go in many different directions. Inside the manhole, we would think you can look at where they are, but it's... Inside the manhole, we could think to look at where they are, but it's such a spaghetti network, and once it leaves it, it's hard to tell. So for our purposes, if we weren't crossing the, with a new storm system, there could be causes to say, well, we know there's already a water and a sewer service through the old building there. If they had to cross it somewhere, we could match that, that would be great. But with a storm system, it's not left to us, much option, and I don't think anybody wants to guess, because that's definitely not something we want to hit. Even, even if you went out there with your own service and dug back again, that would just be one, one point. We're trying to get a general profile in case anything were to move, we'd have a general idea of where. And at this point, we're hoping it's compact, as they said it is, and multiple layers, not spread out going several different directions.
Understood. And if we, if we need, after all is said and done, if we need to go under it, these other methods of remote sensing can't help us understand the bottom of the structures?
When you got stacking, that's, you'll pick up the top, but you wouldn't know what's underneath there. That, that's what's really driving it, because if you have just a normal, say, a single line of water line, you could get a general depth idea if you didn't have a manhole in access point. And just like with the storm system, which, you know, it's, it's a maze of stuff, it's, there's a lot, I think, buried construction boxes and manholes out there that no one's been able to pick up. We're hoping to avoid all that. What we're really trying to do is anything we have as a fixed grade that we have to come in that we can't modify, those are the crossing points for picking up. Water lines, you can, you can dip and bend, you can't do a sewer, you can't do a storm. And so those are the ideas of, we don't want to find out from a cost perspective. I still call an SUE a good insurance policy, it may not be a hundred percent, but it's a whole lot closer than just taking the word from plan sets and the stuff that was put into it.
Thank you.
It's almost like they're holding us hostage.
Sure, right away, that's one thing that I've always said, is just the town's right away.
Well, I especially-
I don't know if there was a long-term agreement from the way back.
I especially appreciate your observation that they may not know precisely where it lies between point A and point B.
And I, I think the second engineer that came out the last time was more open about that. First guy said, oh, it's, it's right here. When they located it with their painting, it's not in a straight line, it bends and turns, which, does it go like this as a hole? We hope so. The second guy was more realistic that when they left that manhole, there's no telling, well, it could have been in the way, it could have forced the change of your shift. You would have thought they would have done record drawings put back in those days. There may be in the set of plans, but the reality of what was built could be completely different. And if it wasn't their main, if it was one single duct bank or a service, you wouldn't worry about it. But then, it's their main figure off their operations center across the road. And it was, at one point, it was probably all underground, and then as it grew, it had to go above ground or vice versa. But those two manholes are labeled UTC, which is United Delta, so that's some of that stuff.
And maybe this is beating that horse, but is there any empty space or voids in those conduits that they could send some type of device through to sound or?
They told us they were looking for a pool. And, and part of the locating service when we do that is they have to set a charge, something on those lines as part of how they magnetically pick it up.
Okay.
And what part of an issue we do, this is basically a level A, which is your vertical. We'll go back, a part of that is kind of a level D, just to do some level verification, especially on that one. Because that's the most critical one. Anything, when you think about lines that are running the street, anything that you can put, you can bend in vertical, it's not a big deal, because you can find it and then you can go on, and the first, it's the storm, it's the sanitary. Unless we set that grade, we don't have an option to come back and do. The good news from our site down to the, I guess, the ditch outlet, you know, the hot truck office, is pretty good follow. And I think we'll be coming out, we have to deep from our site, and then gradually work our way back out. So there's a good chance we'll be under it. However, that's going to open up that street, and at that point, whatever else you need to do, you might as well do it, because your street's starting to be torn pretty out.
Does anyone think that we should do stormwater treatment on the project? Make a motion that we approve the SUE?
Second?
Moved by Michael Fiocca, second with Bob Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Marsha and Carrie, thank you.
Do we need to, I don't know.
I think if, on the, the type of storm filtration system that we should design, and then the, which option of the water main improvement, we would also perceive as design on. Those two things, and, and sewer, yeah. I'm happy to answer, try to answer any of your questions about the other three as well.
How would you suggest going with the storm filter system?
It sounds like the best option long-term.
We have that, that cost already established in the budget, so there would be no, no change there.
And both of those scenarios have a detention component of the system?
Yes, yeah.
Honestly, I would be, as much as I would really like to go through our system, I know this project's getting expensive. And if option one is going to build the same site-specific requirements that option three does, at a highly significant lesser cost, now we need to start with option one.
Very interesting.
Elizabeth, how do you feel about that, that, not putting you on the spot, but?
I'm thinking ahead, like what you're-
Yes.
If you were fire hydrant for the mighty service, then I think in that area, it would be a good service, so that's the option. I think here's a system benefit from a townwide perspective, that option three. And the area that is covered by what is, where that benefit goes, covers a pretty large area. But if you do option one, you're considering one block of it, you can go back later and replace the next one, and make the type of tying to rectory and where that ten inch line is, that's the benefit, is getting the, that, that provides more of an interconnection.
So the hydrants you're mentioning aren't just on Salisbury?
I'd have to, I can look at all the information, I have all my, any costs that we're getting at tonight. That was one of the things I read into the information, was that the broader town benefit was significant enough that it seemed like a good option. And then the cost, I don't know, maybe it was kind of a tear at that cost, it is more to it than one.
So we've got, I don't, option one, we've got a cost profile for that, which includes design and construction?
The estimate that we had for option one, when we explored it, was eighty-one thousand dollars.
And that was design and construction?
That, yes. We've already, that's, the design of that is in our budget.
That was a construction estimate?
Eighty-one thousand, sorry, is the construction estimate, we already have the design.
But hydrostructure, what are they doing?
Um, I do know-
They've, they've put over two hundred thousand on their estimate.
Yes.
It seemed high to us, but it's their report.
So the two hundred thousand's for what?
Pots and gun?
Hydrostructures estimated two hundred and thirty-four thousand for option one versus eighty-one, which was our estimate.
But, but I would caveat it too, that hydrostructure, I think, includes a lot more payment repair.
Well, uh, right.
There's a lot more broader basin, I think their estimate was, had a high percentage of CNA too as well. Kind of tapping off what Russ said. The option three that they recommend in their report and the reason why is that they're adding the thought of, from a town benefit, while the cost may be a little higher. You've got the church, and you've got some other businesses that could benefit.
Two churches.
Two churches, that could benefit from that versus servicing the new town hall. The town hall and the businesses right there, but you, you would get more town fire flow improvement for those two blocks.
And one of the elements of the, the choice, you know, the cost, one of the, the factors of the cost of that improvement is tearing up an additional block of road. Part of what we're learning about the stormwater treatment and tying into the existing system, we're going to have to tear up part of the next block of Salisbury Street. So where the block between Fayetteville and Rectory, to make that connection for the stormwater, into the stormwater system, there's about two-thirds of that block that will be impacted by that improvement. So we're-
Kind of a cost to share with any gentleman.
It would be, it would be where you don't, you don't see that in the, you wouldn't see that in the hydrostructures report, because that wasn't a consideration. But certainly, as we, if we are going to design that and investigate that, we would, we would consider how that is impacted by the other improvements.
Could we not design it and then structure the bid such that it becomes an alternate?
For the water?
Yeah, you could do the one block and then have a second part as an alternate.
We just have to have a design, we have to design of the design.
Yeah, but we would want a design of the design.
And bids come in and you can have a little bit more leeway on how you spend the money.
And what we recommend for all of these off-site improvements is actually having them as bid alternates, and that's how we'd recommend setting them up. While alternates are often thought of as options, some of these would not be options. We do need to make a water main improvement of some sort for the town hall project. With the existing six inch line, it won't support the building. So, so one variation or another has to be accepted, but an alternate would give us that flexibility if, if one or more options was desired.
I think that would also, as an alternate for the off-site, it allows you to look at other type of funding possibly for off-site versus your-
Doesn't have to be-
Take your town hall.
Oh, I would, I would think that'd be a smart way to do this, go option one, base bid, and then remainder option three as an alternate. The caveat is you have to design the rest of option three.
I think that, that would be, you could- Oh, okay, we do, we will need some additional survey work, but, for the, oh, he stopped at Fayetteville.
He stops at Fayetteville.
Oh, he stops at our office, okay.
Have thoughts about the number three as opposed to number two, the loop?
What are you doing?
Between two or three?
We really do not provide a lot of added benefit for the length of line, the sure-footed, meaning it was covered. It's a longer length, so it's more potent.
So, so two blocks, and option three would have a lot more impact?
If you make the connection from the line in Nelson Street, from the twelve into ten on Rectory, and connect the most two, this would give you the benefit of bringing the six to eight, which is a benefit to the connecting the two.
Does that water line go back up to Creekside Apartments?
It could potentially allow us an opportunity to see how that can look there too.
Another thing I was thinking about with the block, I don't really know what improvement, the old biolex building, like the, you know, I was thinking that if that could be useful, if they're going to have water in the areas of the shit.
This is just one that twice, then a time, then up, might not be as difficult to do in the future.
That's fair to go.
But even option three, we approve the characteristics of, well, the existing system in front of biolex will be improved.
Yeah, I think one of the things that would be done, and I read in their report, they recommend is to replace the valves to, to the current, like if we're tying back into the existing six, if there's, just replace the new valves, because there's concern that some of the valves may not be working, which could be affecting how much their open or close, or if frozen, the shut opens. We would replace those valves as part of that, even if you're attaching back to that six, you have a new drive guarantee, you can go before.
And as far as the sewer, there won't be a better time to replace that sewer line than when there's nothing flowing through it.
Yeah, so the sewer that we're talking about is basically from the new driveway.
Okay, it's mentioned.
It's just the service lateral to the building, right?
It's that main, from there, it's an intersection. It's an old terracotta, it was, the, your asset manager said it was in good shape. We just thought, well, we're going to be out there tearing everything else up, don't have to, but.
It is not a high priority, replace it from the sewer at that main of that project, but the material type is what makes it a timing reason to consider it.
How deep is it?
Uh, six, eight, six, eight feet, I think.
It's got a lot of, a lot of cushion on top of it.
Doesn't have to be, it's not, it's not rated to be replaced, it's just saying if you fix your whole string back up and then, then two years in a row, I might have to replace the sewer line.
And just like the other off-site improvements, we would, we'd recommend having it as an alternate. So even at the time of bid, if it wasn't accepted, but something during construction revealed that that really did need to happen, then you would have a number for it. And you, it would be a competitive bid at that point, rather than asking for a change order midway through construction.
And that's really would put it out of any design, because you would place it exactly where it is today, vertically, like horizontally.
Pretty much in the same direction.
Yeah, so they would, they would have construction on there for that.
Well, there's, there are alternate ways of doing it, you could, you could do a six inch line, you could actually replace it. I don't know what the manhole conditions are, if their old manhole is properly replaced. The only cost that really gets into that is obviously affecting existing services without that. You don't have decent debris miles past the normal construction activity, slip line with PBC. If you do that, that's probably an eight inch pipe in there now, remember there's a, there's something called pipe burst in there. And actually, line, line is dis- but, but some of these things that I'm saying can also be pretty expensive. So if you've already got the street torn up, and it was part of the construction sequencing, while everything else is in line, a utility contract could work that versus just coming back later. We're just, we're just adding to the discussion, it would definitely be an alternate. It's not, but we are proposing just a path to it right now for our new service for the-
And tying with PBC or?
We're going to probably use ducting, just because of getting that duct back?
Yeah. Uh, so it sounds like an ad alternate, great, great idea.
Am I hearing a consensus about alternate for option three? To go two blocks on water main improvements?
So to recap, the water, stormwater filtration system, we're talking about the storm filter system. And then on water main improvements, we're looking at option one for the construction cost and the bid alternate for the next block over to Rectory. And then, an alternate for the sewer improvements off-site, is that right? Does that surprise you?
Salute.
Second?
Moved by Michael Fiocca, second with Bob Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, this is item number four, is the elementary school bridge in Albright.
Oh, disappointment.
You want to start?
Yeah. I'll start. Good evening. So, uh, we've been dealing with FEMA for the last year on the elementary school road. And unfortunately, it is not what we were expecting. So, um- So they have come and told us that for the school, for Pittboro Elementary School Road, the determination of funds is only $47,713. This, the main reason why this amount is so low is because the culvert itself was not actually damaged. So that was the big determination in this estimate. So the $47,713 was a number that our engineers, Weatherall Engineering, determined for, to get the road, school, the road back up to its pre-storm condition. And, and it was so low because the culvert was not damaged. If the culvert was damaged, to get it back to pre-storm conditions would have been significantly higher.
The cost of the culvert would have been that cost.
Yes. So, so that's the baseline, is the $47,713. Now, if we wanted to, we asked for mitigation, which means, you know, to improve it, well, the most that they would give us would be 100% of the baseline. So that's approximately $94,000. However, our cost estimate to upgrade it was $364,000. And so they, so we don't qualify for mitigation because they will not do a partial mitigation. They won't give us, they won't give us the $97,000 towards the $364,000. It's either all or nothing. And so they asked, I mean, we were going back and forth, is there any way to get our, our number down for upgrading? And unfortunately, there's no way to do that because of the grade, rate, when you say the grade of the.
The, the cost of the culvert itself, it is the bulk of the cost. And so that's where, if we're going to replace the culvert, that it was a significant cost associated with that, that exceeded 100% over the replacement cost.
So we are coming before you with three different options, which, do you want to go over the three options or do you want me to? So, and, and the numbers that I have in the memo there are my best approximation. But the first one would be to proceed with the upgrade that we had talked about and that we have Weatherall Engineering doing the design work for. If we proceed with that, the town has to cover approximately $491,000 because we're only getting $47,000.
The second option I can kind of speak to, we've already entered into contract with Weatherall to do this design because we were operating in the effect that we thought we had in this process, moving through in a certain path. If we were to complete that so that we had a project ready to bid in the future, then that would be what the second option is. Complete the design, have everything ready so that it could be done in the future, and we don't lose the benefit of what has been done so far. And so that is where the $126,825 additional would be the remainder of what we would need to cover, the town would be covering. The third option is to.
Listen, who's the approving authority of that bid on?
They're, they're doing the work for us, so.
It's not a DOT, right?
So reviewed, ready for moving forward, approval probably is not necessary in that statement. We do have things like utility.
Because the town would approve the construction drawings.
Well, it'd be ready for completion of this construction, but it's complete with the, I'm so used to reviewing. But that's where that review approval comes out of my mouth automatically, that they need to complete the, the design work associated with this construction document. They also are preparing the documents and have prepared them for the CLOMAR, the Certified Letter of Map Revision. And that has been, we are working with the state FEMA, or State Purchase and Management Office to review that so that it would be ready to submit to FEMA, but there's costs associated with that. And so that would also be something we could have it ready, but not yet submitted to FEMA. FEMA would have to approve that.
And what kind of longevity does such a study have? In other words, it's 2019, and 2026, we submit this to FEMA. Is it still going to hold water?
I think it's something we might need to touch base and verify, we need to have engineers review, fill out application or things like that, but the work should be able to be a minimal check to verify that there are any current standards that have changed.
As far as the actual design, culvert and roadway, all those things that go along with that, since we are the approving authority, it won't have an expiration date.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
How much of the 126 have we already incurred?
We, yep, we have already paid, and we, and right now, our, we pulled it to contract, we have paid $91,957. That's why that last option, utilize the temporary repair and not proceed, that seven, we still, we are still paying on top of the, you know, so $47,000, we are paying $71,423 if we stop right now. And that includes that $91,000 that we've paid out to Weatherall, it includes the temp, the repair that we've done to the road currently, which we did, we took that, those funds out of, out of Powellville. But we still would be, that, that $71,000 would be money that we, that we are not getting reimbursed for.
How permanent is the solution? We have it in place?
What I have been seeing and been told is holding up pretty well right now.
And is it a much larger pipe? Is that correct?
The pipe did not get changed.
The same pipe?
Yes, the same pipe.
Same pipe that was set in a memo of 2018, that isn't going to carry the two-year storm?
It did.
And it's in a flood plain?
So we've also had a much drier year this year. We've had, we've had storms, we've had rain, but we've had a much drier year and not storms to high storms, that was a lot of what we experienced around the time it did washed over. And I think until we have another large rain event, we won't fully know whether or not there is some weakness to that. But it is holding up for right now, and do we stop at some point in this process and, and just hold tight and not go out there and repair the, the culvert to a larger size at this time? So I think the point that I was just making was that, that the town today has about $71,423 worth of obligation to what we've already done. If we were to complete the design and finish out what we have, had Weatherall helping us, well, it would carry us to the 126.
Right, so essentially an additional $55,000.
And it may be a little less than that because the CLOMAR submittal fee, I think, is in that number, and I would recommend we don't send it in, not until we're ready to look forward. So it may be a little less than that, but as we were saying, we did really draw the front emissions fees, that's the only other three options.
I was not here that last year when we discussed this FEMA, because I'm sure all of us caught all the grief that we was hearing from our schoolmates and all that, why we were taking so long on this bridge. And I do, the only answer I could give them is we were waiting on FEMA. Right now, I think the bridge is serving its purpose. I think we should utilize our repairs right now and move forward, and they spend no more money on this. It's a lot of money, a lot of money.
Just a couple of quick comments too, if I may. At the time that we approached the board with this, following meetings with FEMA, we were, first of all, assured by FEMA that this was a good candidate for an upgrade.
Right, I remember that, yeah.
So we kind of proceeded forward on that basis. Second, as far as the state of unrepair on the bridge, there were two things that we were looking at with that. We wanted, we wanted to, we wanted to kind of consider our options with what can be done on site. And then second, to find out if we could get any more feedback from FEMA while we considered our options. During that time, we did learn that it was possible to restore the culvert and to restore the road to a workable, you know, to a workable state and keep traffic open, because I, like you guys, were receiving feedback from the public that it needed to be open. So that's why we moved forward with repairs at the time. And I'm, I'm told, I've seen pictures of when the, when the previous bridge that was destroyed, when the previous culvert was there 20 years ago, I'm told that what we have now is a little bit more complete than what we had back then. There's a little bit more riprap on the shores, the, there was a little bit more treatment as far as the subsurface underneath my two minutes asphalt. So I, I think it's in a little bit better shape than it was before, if that's a small consolation, but, but yeah, we, we certainly would have done things a little bit differently, I think, if we had different information from FEMA at the time than we had at initial view.
I am concerned that we've spent all this money and that two years from now, the bridge could wash out again, have to go through this whole process again, and that's definitely certainly the two-year flood plain.
Well, it's, it's in a 100-year flood plain, and apparently calculations are, a two-year storm's going to pop the road. What do you think?
The pipe is sized to handle typically two, two-year storming, and roads are typically done, DAT roads are done with 25-year storms now. So that's what we were working towards, was bringing it up to that standard. It's still with potentially ever-hopping 100-year event, even with the repair we were talking about, but it would be much more frequent. It should couple more things, but I would say that, to address your comment about in the future, if we find that we have a problem and we want to act quickly, completing the design work would be a way that we could be positioned to act more quickly, should we need to, to do that. And that would be the second option. We would limit anything we can that is not needed to finish out those drawings, but then we would have complete construction documents that could be put out to bid, should we need that next hurricane season.
And this may be a bit of a hypothetical stretch, but I remember a time when the federal government during the Great Recession was looking under blocks of stones for shovel-ready projects. And if we had complete design work on the improved iron capacity, then that would be shovel-ready.
Yes, yes. It would be a much more viable project if we had an opportunity of something like that. Not, not being a DOT, where I don't know all of the frameworks of what it might apply for, but it would be a much more ready-to-get project that we could do, should we want to put it on the budget in a few years, or have a need to do that in a few years of a hurricane.
So we've sunk $91,000, almost $92,000 in design work towards $126,000 total? Or we need another $126,000?
No, no, no. So then, right, so it would be, right now, the, right now, what we have sunk in, you know, excluding the FEMA, we've sunk about $71,000.
In repairs?
And, and design work.
Oh, and is.
Yeah, and so that's our total outlay. So the $126,000 would be, so the difference between the 126 and the 71 is our additional outlay from this point forward, if you want to finish the design work. So approximately, that's why I said approximately $55,000, but we may be able to be under that. Would be the additional amount that we would expend going forward from today if we wanted to finish that design.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I heard it, $91,000.
The $91,000 is what we have, almost $92,000 is what we have spent on the contract today, but that contract budget is $141,000. Because we had a, there was a, there was a, we had one amendment to that. It was originally $132,800 approximately, and then we had an amendment for $8,500.
So let me mention a slightly different component of this. The 71 is what the town's portion is, the portion that the town has spent so far is 71 plus 47. So the 71 plus 47 gets you the total cost, which is this 91 plus some repair costs that were done out there. The 41 though, we, or 47, what we're anticipating, that's where we reply those dollars to, is that would be off the top, and then the remainder that the town still has to cover is the 71.
Well, ordinarily, I would be very much in agreement with you, Commissioner Farrell, that we should cut our losses and not proceed, but the temporary repair seems to be doing the job. But I think that we can expect that it's going to blow out again. And I think we'd be wise to position ourselves to be ready to perhaps apply or seek assistance from our elected officials in asking FEMA to reconsider that in the future, but right now, I would only suggest we go with that second bullet, that we finish the design work, call the current repairs done, and have the designs ready in case we need them.
I got one more question, and I got to get mixed up on your last comments, Heather. So the design work was $91,000?
We have currently spent, yes.
For design work on that little old bridge?
Yeah.
Wow.
There's a significant amount of change when you change the size of the pipe, to have to do a lot of hydrology and hydraulic work to evaluate what's happening upstream and downstream with the flood plain. So when you make the pipe bigger, water's going to go through it faster, which means you've got to check what's happening downstream, and also, it does affect what's upstream, a little bit, oops, the upstream situation, but it does change that, so you have to study it up and downstream of the change.
Was that a requirement from FEMA?
It's a requirement because the bridge is in the flood plain. It's over a 100-year flood plain, it's over FEMA-regulated string. So the fact the string is regulated, we had to do it. Whether we were doing it, whether a hurricane caused a problem, or it was a brand-new road, any of those scenarios would work like that.
Okay, well, what was the temporary repair cost that Mr. Thomas was?
It was less than the cost estimate to bring the road back to pre-storm condition, so we did.
I got a figure in my mind, I'm just sending it through.
It was approximately $28,000.
Okay, that's 28,000.
What's the date on the flood map before the area?
I'll put my head, but it has been remapped.
2017.
2017.
Pretty recent. And prior to 2017?
I don't know if this area changed that drastically.
But I mean, it's going to be another 20 years before a new map comes in. So as far as meeting FEMA's design standards, we do a design today, it's probably going to meet their standards for another 20 years.
Some very odd change.
Yeah. And odd changes would be CLOMARs all over the place?
Yes. They make periodic ordinance change, recommendations for the ordinance to change, but then that comes back to us, we, they are ordinance, so there's a process to that, but yes, they do happen periodically, but not, not with content level changes that we got drastically.
And how often does rainfall intensity data change in North Carolina?
Every four, five. We could get Mr. Thomas to rebuild his thing three times, what we paid $91,000 for.
I'm not sure that he did, the culvert replacement is.
No, he did not replace it.
I think that was part of what helped that, is that since the culvert was not damaged, he was able to help.
He didn't need a crane?
Quite a bit. Quite a bit, at the time. So, it was a much-
John, you'd need a crane to pull the school bus, aren't you? I mean, this is a road that predominantly carries school buses.
We were thankful to get the repair, and it was originally going to just be a gravel repair, truly temporary, and he was able to work with this asphalt on it, which is part of what's making it last longer.
And I think those eco blocks would probably stand up better with steel rail ones.
So, complete the design work, $55,000?
More.
$55,000, not more than $55,000, but $55,000 more cost?
More, yeah, more than we have spent today.
I mean, John, you make a compelling argument, I hate the idea of this stranded expenditure. And we've heard shovel-ready a lot. The infrastructure's in discussion with our council.
I think the fact that there, this is a, a school route makes it more urgent to get ready, they have to begin to repair equipment, because it has been a problem with schools.
And these funds, we already did a budget amendment for these funds out of general fund, it's just the fact that we will not be repaying that with FEMA funds. So, we won't be doing an additional budget amendment, but it's just an acknowledgement of the fact that we are not going to get FEMA funds to repay this.
And we all, we all account for this in our budget?
Yes. To get back, to get, to finish the design work, not to do the, the personal item, yeah.
And this would not include the filing of the Clomar?
That's correct.
And that could be a savings.
Or, yeah, I would recommend that we hold off on that.
I would, I would agree.
Cause I think that will have an expiration on time, and if we don't know when the construction will begin, that would be a, we could do like that.
Any more questions, or is there a motion?
I make a motion to utilize the temporary repair and not proceed any further.
Is there a second to Jay's motion? In that case, I believe that the motion dies for lack of a second. Is there a further motion?
I make a motion that we complete design work for the upgraded infrastructure projects that delay construction.
That, that will simply make the motion for bullet point number two. Is there a second to her motion?
Second.
John Bonnet, second, through the discussion. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three to one. Um, last item under your old business is the appointment of the Water Quality Task Force. I passed out a memo, um, on the internet late this afternoon, which is copied, which is at your desk, um, in response to Michael Gervais' request that we have an idea of the kind of time and the kind of tasks that would be required of the Water Quality Task Force. I, um, would suggest that both the mayor and the mayor-elect, with input suggestions about membership from the board and staff, be made at the next meeting, since the hours late and the, uh, mechanism, you know, may, may not be in place here. Suggesting a cap of 20 people on the committee task force, who represent the town and the diversity that I played out there, and when needed, could also include people outside of town in order to fulfill a specific expertise. The way I saw it, and I talked with Jim Nuss before the meeting, is that we see that there are two tasks. One's to study the current unregulated contaminants in drinking water, and the other is to study and draft recommendations for new drinking water sources and future expansion, or perhaps the location of the infrastructure for the town in Pittsboro and its delivery system. The, um, I, I have been approached by a number of people who are interested in serving on the community. I think that the first goal of to study the draft recommendation and draft recommendations for the unregulated contaminants may very well depend upon the action that was taken by the Southern Environmental-
Law Center.
Thank you, Law Center, uh, last week. And, um, I'm not saying that that's necessarily going to resolve everything, but it certainly would move the, um, state DEQ along faster. But nonetheless, uh, the, the task force, um, certainly can continue to either supply itself with, um, other tasks, um, or to eliminate them, I should think. So, um, so I was trying to set up for discussion, and, um, I was thinking that perhaps we would submit names over the next two weeks, and to appoint them at the last meeting. Jim is in agreement. He's had some interest in, um, and has some ideas. I've talked with Kyle, who is in the course, and his talk was on every cap and words that you were in here with the people that have been together for renewal, I think he agrees. So, what's the board's name of this?
Yeah, I just have one thing to say. I think it's a good idea, um, just wondering about the number of persons not to exceed 20. If you get 20, is that going to be a little too many to try to work with, or is people going to say, well, there's 18 other people there, I'm not going tonight, and you know what happens?
I think we actually talked about that, and one of the two task forces that Jim Nuss did, is if you get the task force too big, people think, oh, I can be assending it, I won't make an impact. And I was trying to remember how we, how we even came up with the two task forces, and Jim and I couldn't quite remember whether, um, I do believe there was one, um, one of the task forces was, was actually both.
We, that was the official elements?
Official elements, yeah.
Yeah.
You guys all had names, if I remember correctly, and then you had voted on that as the one. The size of that was about 12 or 13?
Yeah.
Remember, Jim? And, uh, it was, it was, uh, a good size for what we were doing, and, uh, we had sufficient number where if someone couldn't make a particular move, we still, you know, we'd find, although we had super big opinions, uh, on that.
I think the task force is a great idea, and there's continued leadership in this town, thank you. I would offer one modification, and that would be selecting the membership. I would like to see each board member appoint two people to the board. That would be 12, as we stand today. And I think the two future board members should also appoint two individuals, that would be 16, which would be, I believe, the note, the, the 20, and, um, now, I have same concerns as Jay, that if you get too many person, it can get bogged down and dysfunctional. But having people who don't, and adding numbers is helpful.
I, I have one concern about doing it that way, and that is, if you're trying to create a, a well-rounded committee, you may not get the diversity that you want, you may not get the key to it. I can see if you're choosing the boards, you might intentionally select a certain number of people that have a science background, you might pick people who have different areas of knowledge or expertise or involvement, and so, it seems a bit more random to what you're talking about.
Well, I think we all are quite familiar with people that we think have the skills to participate, so I would trust in our decision-making to suggest that-
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we really have the expertise, but as far as making sure you have intentional, um, covering all the different areas that you want representation of, but you understand?
So, do you think we should just throw everyone in a pool and then decide?
I don't know, I just think that it should be intentional, if you're trying to cover different areas, as opposed to invite six people that they want, you make in-depth block sizes, you know, that are ready for areas, that you make a difference in other areas, that that would be more true.
Now, two folks that I'm thinking of are very experienced in their fields, very intelligent, bearing, all of them, who could contribute significantly to the cause and are interested within it.
Well, I, I had the impression that this was a mayor's task force, and for that reason, I, I had only ever assumed that I might be able to give guidance or suggestions of names that would be our mayor's task force to assemble, and in this case, she's talked extensively about passing that task force along to the next mayor. She's calling for herself to chair the task force on an ongoing basis, um.
And that Wilson Foley has indicated that she would like to join the crew, um, and that, uh, I, I see what you mean about the diversity issue, all that, I mean, I think that was a problem with every task force we dealt, and, um, so.
Well, it's, uh, matter of it is very important to me, and I'd like to contribute by making recommendations or actually having appointments, uh, as to who I would love to see do this more and more.
I wonder if some of the people you're interested in might-
Probably, probably, that's probably the case.
But I mean, I think that's a reasonable, you know, I mean.
Well, I think, I think this is a, is a town issue, it's, it's not a mayor's issue.
I, I agree, I mean, I just think that if, if each person's thinking too, like they would like to say, it's, I'm just concerned that, for me, if I was, if the ultimate board would be, you know, to identify what kind of representation you want on that board, and then make sure you have people that meet that criteria.
Well, do you want to put forth the list of resume requirements for people to consider?
Um, not just for talking about resume, I'm also talking about, you know, sometimes when you have, well, I'm not necessarily saying that, that you might want people from different parts of the town, and you might want from people who represent a professional, but you also might want people who are personally, I don't know, I'm just, you know, just become a tight focus, yeah.
But you want somebody that's going to conduct this, well, hey, I might, yeah, I'll be on it, I might not have forever.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to say that, see, just a lot of the reason that people felt so strongly about going was that it was a very, very well-run, efficient, facilitated need, and, and that, and they, that's the coup d'oeuvres that, that are incoming there, that's for me, cause I think, uh, everybody, everybody's so about how we'll organize everyone, and if, if we're even halfway, um, in solving your footsteps, um, it's a lot of, um, I don't, I don't think this, uh, this could-
I don't, I don't want to get in the way of the appointment discussion, but I think it's some good discussion we need to tread, but I just want to make a comment of what I read is the second goal of the task force, is to study and draft recommendations for new drinking water sources. I'm assuming that, that that goal will take into account, off the top of my head, three studies that we're currently working on regarding water sourcing. Okay. Yeah, I, I didn't know, or whether or not you were looking to develop new additional studies?
I don't know. I, I, it tends to occur, it, it seems like we have a lot of resources out there already, and that, uh, and that what we'd be doing is when you first, um, they're drafts beginning in the air, so, I mean, ultimately, of course, it's a capital decision about this board, so.
Yeah. And then I think the beauty of your proposal, Mayor, is that by broadening, uh, not really the decision, but by, by asking input from any task force of citizens, then we broaden support for, uh, and probably get some wisdom of the crowd as to which, which of the better ideas there are, um, and I think that will, that will really help this board make its decision.
Jim, do you have any thoughts about how to proceed?
Well, I would just say that, a couple things. One, I would envision this task force at points in time as they move along, to perhaps decide that they need to hear from an expertise that is not represented, cause I don't think we can probably cover every possible expertise. And we can find those people, and, and to come to a meeting, or maybe two meetings to, to fill that gap, so, uh, I think it's probably, uh, inevitable that there will be some knowledge gaps in whatever, however we put this task force together. But, uh, I just envision this task force that is representing not only the experts in the field, but people, ordinary citizens that live here that are impacted by these decisions, and that's a community that I would want to see represented on this task force. And then there are people that want to do business in this town, or who are doing business or in this town, who are developing in this town, and they are going to be impacted just by these issues and these decisions, they have to be, you know, then you have this third block category, people who have real true expertise in these kinds of, of issues. Some of that expertise can be the nuts and bolts kind of expertise, and some can be the environmental expertise that, that comes there. So, those are the categories I would see being represented on this kind of task force, and, uh, I think it would be important to have the commissioners participate in whatever way they decide in this process, and you and I, however they decide, but I think it's a, a decision on how to do that. I think on the, uh, two task forces that I was mainly involved in, the political housing and the official elements, I think those were essentially board-driven, is that my correct?
My recollection of the political housing was that, again, that was a mayor's task force, and the official elements was a committee driven.
I think that's right, yeah, I think you're correct, John, that, that's correct.
Why don't we do this, why don't we split the baby here, and, um, if you have suggestions, um, please submit them to Jim and me. Um, I think I sent an email that has the people who have approached me so far, and Jimmy, you've got an idea of us from those, and let's just put it in the pot and figure out what, um, you know, I, I figure out how to acknowledge the, the board's preferences along with the community preference and the, and the search for perhaps, um, some people from a community that we don't do it from ourselves.
Yeah, tell me what you do.
Next meeting? Next name? No, no, no long resume requirements.
I hear you sending us through all the names to you guys, and we'll come talk about it at the next meeting.
I think we're then at Commissioner Concerns.
Can you circle back just one item?
Sure.
Do you have some idea about time limit, or are you thinking of monthly meetings, or twice every other week?
I said, once a month is okay. Unless we decided as a task force that we needed more, more intensive, in which case the task force is obviously going to discuss one judge so that they can accommodate that or not.
Are you going to expect a report, or some decision, or some recommendation within a finite period of time? Or is this perpetual?
That's good, that's great. Would you like to have a report from quarterly or...
If you don't have a time limit, there's no incentive to get it over with.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, honestly, what is it? I mean, it's an ongoing situation, like it's quite a dynamic situation. I honestly expect the group to serve for years. My anticipation?
We're going to agree.
Well, I think it's a really complex issue, and, you know, one of the things I think is going to be important to discuss is, or group is going to try to do, is find ways to keep the collision between the systems at the end.
But these are decisions for you all, and you're just asking for recommendations from the citizens.
Yes.
So your job lasts forever, or your terms, whatever. Their job might not. Who's going to be your staff for this task force? You've got to think about that, too.
The task force, is the way I see it, all right.
Oh, Adam, Adam, we would like to have on the task force as well, as part of staff member from the town of Pittsburgh. Staff, but I have Brian Bruce back, he doesn't have anything else to do. Jim, I can't remember, did we hear from your task forces, do you mean that the spirit moved, or...
No, it's about, I think you record on the, there's an elements of quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yeah, and I think quarterly is a good time to, I mean, it can be very short, or it can be very long, depending upon the progress that the task force has made. And, you know, getting to Mr. Messick's point, it might be well to set a target that we would like to have an initial report at least of some depth within X period, whether that's a year, or whether it's something around that. With the expectation in our heads that this task force will continue to go forward, as Commissioner Bioko has talked about, this is a competition that's going to be with us forever. And the members may change from time to time, but it might be well to, it might be necessary to have a group doing this work and making recommendations for the commissions for a longer time. And people that are on it initially may drop off and others appointed, and so on.
I think that to me, the board may come up with an issue that they want assistance in, right?
Yeah.
Where they say, hey, we need some backup on this, or whatever, the task force maybe would build relationships through all of it. Whatever the board, I think the board's house, I guess.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think F under the thing, you know, such other studies and recommendations as the town board and the mayor directs from trying to know himself.
Plus, we'll be also getting reports from CDM Smith with their bottle of water. Four, five, six months.
Okay, so why don't we be thinking then, it sounds like a quarterly report would not be a bad thing, but the target date for completion might be something we will think back to in the end, and next month. Commissioner Concerns, then, is everybody comfortable with bringing on? Jay Farrell, we usually start with you.
All right. Percy's not here, but up on Salisbury Street, let's see, West Salisbury, right beside Tommy Edwards's antique store, or Saturday, there was two cars parked there. Also, the whole line was parked on the side near the wine shop in City Tap. And it was, you could hardly even get one vehicle through there. I think at one time, we used to have no parking signs on that side of the road.
We had no parking sign, it disappeared somehow.
Okay, can we get those put back up?
Absolutely.
All right, that was it. Another thing, I kind of heard this through the grapevine about the school board, possibly bought some land out on Renaissance Road, possibly moving the school board that is across from the funeral home. I was under the impression that they were working with the town, or were giving some kind of instruction to the town, but we never heard anything about that. So I don't know if there's any miscommunication between the commissioners, ourselves, county commissioners, or what's going on out there. It looks like we're going to be stuck with a lot of empty building over there. They did vote last four to one to move out there on Renaissance Drive.
Mr. Brucebeck, have you heard anything about it?
Just through Dan Montane and I guess some of the building programming that they were doing, but I don't, I mean, at the time that I was discussing it with them, I wasn't under the impression that anything was final at that time, that's been a few months ago. I haven't heard.
And I look at it as, you know, a lot of people leaving town, empty building. I don't know, it's a source, I don't know why they don't tear down what they got, and build a nice new building right there. They got plenty of land there, but I'm not on the school board.
I did hear...
I know you're getting more done with it on there, don't you?
And I share this concern, Commissioner Farrell, and a citizen approached me about it with this as a rumor before I heard from this school board member, but what the school board member shared with me was that school board staff have given guidance to that board that it would cost so much more to renovate that existing structure, I would assume, because of the legacy of building materials like asbestos that, or maybe just would be impossible or expensive to renovate the existing building or add on to the existing building. But I went and looked at parking spaces, just trying to get a guess of how many people they have there. And on those occasions where I need to go over there, for whatever reason, I've only seen a couple dozen cars. Not to say that it's not a presence in our town, and not to say that those, I estimate twenty to fifty, maybe it's as high as seventy-five employees who are active there and would come into town for lunch, or whatnot. It's going to be a loss, don't get me wrong, I think that will be a loss. We're not getting tax revenue from the building. And it occurred to me that that's eight acres or more of relatively flat land, not too far from the center of town, that we're wanting to increase in density. We're wanting to increase in attractiveness and vibrancy. I do think that we should have this conversation, I had it on my list of things to talk about, so I really appreciate you bringing it up. And I wonder if we might want to think about this in a more concerted way, and ask our planners, planners what they would think about this, and maybe we should put a formal inquiry to the school board. What are their plans for, because I think it's school board property, not county property.
So there was a plan for a new building that we were reviewing. We had went through at least a month of review, and given them comments, and that's when the county, the county, not the school board, I think, convinced the school board to remove the Renaissance Drive. We were all in, they were going to tear down the existing buildings. They were going to build at least a two-story building. Maybe three.
I believe it was three.
Maybe three, and the idea was to move more to this central location from elsewhere in the county. It was going to bring more employees, more school employees to that site. Now, what I have heard, you know, secondhand, is that the county thinks that property of being good for affordable housing.
I think that's the same thing.
A dense affordable housing project. So that's what I've heard, and that's what we have, if they did have a plan, we were reviewing it. Everything was going along, it's fine, and I think the county and the school board met, and then said Renaissance Drive probably is a better location. Followed along.
So in some ways, proposed, or the thinking was about the affordable housing component.
That was just secondhand, I had not yet worked out.
I was just wondering, was that the Renaissance Drive, or was that downtown?
Oh, no, it would be downtown. Renaissance Drive is way too far out. Yeah, yeah, tearing down the, which is A M and the current central service building, and re-imagining that place, and affordable housing for a mixed-use product.
Yeah, I would think the highest best use would be mixed-use to include affordable housing. Pretty high density, I think, would be really suitable for that spot. I'd love to see the ballpark preserved, if that could fit in their vision. Because I think it's definitely used, well-used, and it kind of enhances that block, I think.
Yes, several aspects of recreation there that would enhance the, you know, like park associated.
So I don't even know if others share that vision or desire, but I do wonder if, Mr. Jones, if you have any thoughts about what barriers there may be to that kind of eye-widely vision, three to four-story density, really emphasizing walkable, maybe have less of a burden for parking, just to really boost that density.
I think that's a great idea, obviously, but these are a challenge for us right now, yes, in the near term. So we've got the additional sewer, because I think there's a plan for the county to take their sewer with them. That's going to be a request for you all to contemplate.
The capacity?
There's twists to this, so we could leave that piece of property with a void of sewer. So maybe we have to come up with, well, they're going to need sewer out Renaissance, and we provide that. So they want...
We provide that, too.
That's right. So they want to, they want to take with their, whatever their allocation is today.
I don't want to overstep, but that just seems like a lost starter, because then you're creating an empty lot that doesn't have the capacity to be...
I think we all need to talk, school board, to the county, we can imagine what we would want there. Do you think that you talk with the...
We just get a conversation.
...uh, you're bidding with the county. Well, but they own the property, and they're making decisions, and assuming you all are going to be on board. So y'all heard it, y'all need to maybe do something to counter that.
I've heard the county, not specifically this block, but I've heard the county say that they are interested, officials are interested in purchasing land for the purpose of affordable housing. Does this kind of make sense to you, or have you been encouraged in that?
The issue of the sewer is just not, like you said, it's a property not developed in the near future. But they need sewer at Renaissance Drive as well, so that is, you want to be, kind of squeeze some more out of paper.
At the time they told that idea, I didn't have my own decision.
No, these were all conversations we were having with the county and their folks, so. Just sit out there until now, and you all need to think about.
Well, I mean, I understood they bought two hundred acres out there.
I think that's...
Now, what does this mean, they're going to move a complete building complex out there? They have their own government, county government would be out of the county seat, and out in their own little jurisdiction in Renaissance Drive? Is that what we're, that's what I'm envisioning, because it looks like they're wanting to get out of this part, because they have not communicated anything to us, period.
That would be the first, first I would kind of put that, I haven't heard that at all. I mean, I can see where you would go with that, I can see where that would be possible, but county manager didn't say anything like that to me as of yet.
We need to, this came from a board member, so I'm pretty sure it's a straight shooter. A school board member. I was just a little more concerned at why they have not come to the town and expressed what their desire, what they may be doing in the future. Didn't have to hear it. Yes. And if there's a problem, then we need to address it. That's all I got. That was enough, wasn't it?
Boy, that was a lot of...
Takes care of you for next week.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jay.
Michael, Michael's good. Jay, John?
Yes, circulating again before the meeting, we received a response from the Chatham Forest Homeowners Association, signed by the officers of the HOA, and there were four items on there. I'll go over them real quick, but I think it'd be great if Mr. Brucebeck could keep it, either formulate a response, or just go ahead and send a response. Some of those items you may need board feedback on, I don't know. Is there a call, it was Cynthia Lane, utilities easement upgrade, there was a request to upgrade that easement to a greenway, between Chatham Forest and the new Thaly neighborhood, or Penney neighborhood. It was a suggestion, or request, actually, that we begin thinking about alignment of Parkland King Jr. Drive with Fire Tower Road. So that's a proper four-way intersection rather than dogleg as it is now. I've heard that suggestion before. And it must be good to know what the road map would be for that, if we were to contemplate doing anything in that direction. Because I imagine that requires DOT and a lot of other reglet. Question about Thompson Street Culker crossings, I think you could probably quickly answer. And something about a blue line stream. So again, that's because, yeah, yeah, that's in everybody's email inbox, that's in the pot. Mr. Brucebeck, would you be willing to have a look at that, and either present at the next board meeting, or go ahead and get back to her? Yes. I'm thinking about departure of our parks planner. It definitely seems like a good time to reevaluate that position, especially in light of the workload in the planning office. I wouldn't want us to lose parks capabilities or our... I wouldn't want us to lose parks capabilities or our, I feel like we've got a real, how to put it, we're making some headway there, and we've got a real solid master plan and we're beginning to have some recognition for our parks, and so we wouldn't want us to lose ground, but just real eager to hear Mr. Brucebeck and/or Mr. Jones, as you all are thinking about the reevaluation that you'll put back to us.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, and I agree totally. I think luckily, that position offers us the most flexibility from what we're capable of doing internally. So it's kind of an easy one to absorb, but you are correct, we have, you know, it's an easy loss to absorb. You are correct, we've got a lot of work otherwise, and it's, you know, it's a shame on a personal level to see Paul go, and in other ways, it's an opportunity for us to move forward.
Thank you.
All right. There's nothing further than, if there are motions going to fill the session from our attorney, Jordan, ten minutes vacation to move by Michael Fioke.
Can we take a five-minute break? Make a motion and take a five-minute break before closing session?
We'll put that motion on hold.
Five minutes.
We'll be making one out. I'm like...
We have a lot of work.